Many winter athletes are we talking about? Do you have a number?
Between 75 and 100.
Okay. Also, on the Warren County website, and it's a New York State website, it's in conjunction, you know, you touched on, there are several metrics that need to be reached, you know, the 4% rolling average, the regional hospital capacity, the regional rate of hospital admissions. There's also another factor which I'm finding a little confusing, and I'm just wondering if you can shed some light on that. The other factor that they're quoting, there's, and this is, I wrote it down, this is right from it, it says, "The absence of other emerging epidemiological data, information, or factors that impact COVID-19 control or mitigation." Is that referring to any new variants that might emerge that are much more contagious? So therefore, if another variant comes into the county and it's another factor that needs to be looked after, is that what that is referring to? Do you guys know?
I'm gonna let Mr. Keys field this.
The term variant or alternate strand of COVID-19 has been a factor that needs to be considered when obtaining approval from your local county public health department. Right now, that Dr. Borges, who is the Warren County Medical Director, Janelle Jones and Patty Velden, who are Director and Assistant Director of Public Health, they're aware of that metric as well, and that is also being factored in. The cases of the variant have popped up in various counties across New York State, and it's, once again, up to the local Department of Health to make that determination that the presence of something like that is significant enough to cause pause.
Okay, so that could, it could be another factor, there could be another number associated with that if something, if that became prevalent, is that what you're saying?
Yes, but I don't believe that there's been an established number or threshold for which it would exceed something, I don't know if that has yet been established. If it exceeds a certain number, then you're automatically to go on pause. That's a question that we'd have to probably obtain further clarification from the county health department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Excuse me, Tim Ward. Just a real quick question, do all the metrics given out by the state?
There's a public forum coming up in just a couple minutes, this is for the board, and then it'll be public forum if you sign up in the chat bar.
I apologize.
Thank you.
President Dan, it's Joe.
Joe, just a moment, Amy was just starting to answer, ask a question, Amy was just starting to ask a question, we'll be with you right after that, okay?
I have other questions, but just to follow up after Kathy, is there a comment that that raised, how do other emergency access data factors, et cetera?
We can't hear Amy, Dan, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just wanted to get clarification on then, what Kathy mentioned, just to make sure that it is, thank you, just clarification that that phrase, "The absence of other emerging epidemiological data," et cetera, et cetera, is referring to other variants, or are there other things that they may be referring to? So, when you get your answer from public health, if you could just see if there's more information there.
Absolutely, I did, I did get that question answered from Dr. Leonard this afternoon that was submitted to me, and he said, "As of this evening, the CDC has not established any new protocols in regards to the new variants." And he said, "They do, he does, as a medical director, pay attention to that as well, but at this point in time, CDC had not set any new to him, to his knowledge, because I did ask him about that in my conversation this afternoon, but of course, we're always going to follow Warren County Public Health, so we collaborate with them, you know, Rich does, he's our school liaison on a day-to-day basis, so we're always going to work with him."
President Dan, it's Joe.
Go ahead, Joe.
I have just four comments, if you would rather me hold it until we get into the resolution with discussion, or I'll be glad to give them now, whatever would fit protocol better.
If it's regarding the presentation, I can say it now, but if it's regarding the resolution, we're certainly going to have comments regarding that as well, if you want to wait.
Okay, I can split them, I will do two and two. The first thing, in terms of, one of the concerns, you know, the presentation, thank you, gentlemen, very much, very, you know, well put together, a lot of information, a lot of information, I think that is new to some of us now, that maybe would have been best to digest it a little bit, but one of the things, and this is going back to the variants, because I read a lot of this today, particularly from the CDC, we're still in a raging pandemic, there is no question, we're still in a raging pandemic. The CDC issued warnings today about the UK B117. It's 70% more easily transmitted, and it's doubling, in every 10 days, it's doubling. There are 699 cases so far of the B117, or no, variant, 699, 690 are the B117. That's one of six variants, there are others from South Korea, Africa, Brazil, I believe. So, we don't know what this is doing, and I guess, my question is, the 4% number, and I guess, in Mr. Gannon or Mr. Keys, the 4%, 3.9 to me is very close to 4%, and when it was 4.2 yesterday, seems a little bit premature, but why start it when it is so close to 4%, which it really, there's no trend that it hasn't come down below 4% other than one to two days?
Well, our school medical director, we've worked a lot with him, and Dr. Leonard has read our plan, Joe, in great detail, and we've had several discussions with him about every facet, and he said, "He feels like we are very prepared for this." He thinks we've done an excellent job at setting up safety protocols, and he praised us for the work that was in there. So, we were very excited about that, and we know, at any point in time, we would pause immediately if there was a positive case and/or for any circumstance that was reported to Mr. Keys that was concerning, that's why that hotline is there, but we really feel like, Dr. Leonard, as said, he is comfortable in approving the sports we put forward, but you know, obviously, wrestling's not on the docket.
Right, I guess, I guess, thank you, Mr. Gannon, but I guess, just a follow-up to that, too, my concern with that is that that was a question that was asked Dr. Leonard at the workshop about the transmission, or the transmissibility, if that's a word, of the new variants, and he said, "That is a concern, that is the unknown." So while we can feel comfortable, or you can feel comfortable today, it just seems premature, I'm sorry, because I'm getting a conflicting, I'm getting conflicting feelings on that, one time, he said it was very concerning, and now he's totally in agreement with it, so, okay.
Hi, Dan, it's Pat.
Go ahead, Pat.
So, I have a few things I'd like to comment on. One, I guess, I'm a little disappointed that we're just having this conversation now, tonight, I kind of expected it last time at the workshop, and I know, you know, we each got an individual phone call last week, and as the first, we really were kind of told that this was going to be happening tonight, and that we're going to be voting on it tonight, and I don't think, as a board, we've had time to discuss it and hash out all of our questions, so I think that's a little unfair. Our main priority, I feel, in my opinion, should be to educate our students, I'm glad that Kyle said that our students are going to be coming back, you know, trying to bring them all back 100%, but until we get all of our students back 100% in person, I don't see why we're stuck in high-risk sports, our focus should be education. Couple other things, we, you know, are continually keeping our students six feet apart all day, where they're wearing masks all day, phys ed class, they have to be 12 feet apart, they can't carry equipment, and then at 3 o'clock, we're going to just turn everything off and let them go play high-risk sports, not that, there's no common sense in that to me, and I don't agree with that. As far as that new UK variant, there is that UK variant in the county, we discussed that at the workshop, and Dr. Leonard was very much on board with that, saying that as of March, that's going to be the dominant variant, and that is just highly transmissible from person to person, so much more than the one we're dealing with now, so I do think this is a little bit premature. What else did I want to say, while I have work? You know, I guess another thought I had is liability, you know, I know club sports are going on, and that's great, that's between the club and the parent, if anything should happen, liability's not going to be on the district. Wearing my Board of Ed hat, I just feel like we should be looking out for liability as a school board as well, so I have to say, I'm opposed to starting high-risk sports, I just wanted to get that out there, thank you.
Any other comments about the presentation? Brandon, you got it?
I have a question, I want to wrap my head around this whole 4% infection. Is 4% based on the number of tests that are given out compared to the positives that are determined by that?
That is correct, that's how, that's how the percentage comes up, so the number of tests that are given in the county for that day, and then the number of people that test positive as a result.
So basically, what you're doing is testing the positivity of only the people that are getting tested?
Correct, correct.
You're not determining the health of Warren County based on that, so quite possibly, I guess what I'm getting at, is that the number of tests can go down, the number of positives can go down, and you can still be at 4%. I know for Warren County Health, they're underpaid, understaffed, and overwhelmed, but I really, for who the New York State Public Health, and talk to the governor, I really think it's a poor metric, because we're not measuring the health of these students, we're measuring the health of the people who are sick that are getting tested, it's not a true 4% of the health of the county. So, thanks for telling me that's how it is, and that's just my opinion.
President Dan, my, this is Joe again, I apologize, but my second point that I wanted to make, remember, I said I had two? See, and I guess, this kind of mirrors, as I said, too, I felt this was premature, along with Ms. Velden in saying that, in terms of the knowledge, but as I reviewed the resolution, and then particularly, as I saw the presentation well put together tonight, certainly, the thing is, I went back to, this is being presented to the board, the Board of Education is going to vote on a resolution later tonight, so I said, "I can remember last year, as a board, we put a lot of time and effort into determining board goals, and so, please forgive me for taking the time, but for 2020 to 2024, last in June of this year, we did three goals. One, all students will graduate prepared for college careers, ready for civic engagement, and committed to lifelong learning. Number two, all students will think critically and creatively, communicate in an inclusive manner, adapt as technology evolves, and persevere through setbacks and adversity. And number three is the one that really makes me struggle. All members of the school community will maintain a campus-wide environment that fosters safety, empathy, and wellness, in the middle of a raging pandemic, I'm not sure high-risk sports plays a role in that."
Very, any other comments about the presentation before we get into the meeting?
If no, if no one has a question about the presentation, I do, but I don't want to take someone else's question, so...
I was just recognizing Amy, that you wanted to hear Amy's question, then we'll come back to you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy, my question goes back to, I think it was slide number two, with the Warren County percentage and the capital region percentage, and there was some reference to and or, I understand what you mean by means, but I'm not sure how that really relates to these protocols, because it seems to me that it should be very clear, and that's not, so I guess my question is, if, for example, capital region goes over 4%, but Warren County stays under 4%, is that saying that the athletes can still move forward?
We would pause, we're linked, Warren County has linked us with the capital business.
So it really is an and, that both of those have to be below?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, and then, I saw the consent form and the waiver, or it's kind of like a waiver, I guess my question is, and I may have missed this, but the plan is very thorough, so I really do applaud you, a lot of time and energy went into that plan. In the plan, is there, what happens, are there any consequences if there's either noncompliance or some inaccurate or inaccurate information? So for example, if you find out, because they know you have a hotline, that someone knowingly had contact and did not report it, what are the consequences, and is that laid out of the plan?
That, so, the first off, the first part you asked about was the waiver, and I want to, I do, something we did forget to tell the Board of Education, that was run through Larry's office, Larry looked over all that and did approve, just so everyone knows, so as far as, you know, if someone did not report, that's part of what the athletes signed off on, along with the family, that they will be honest and truthful, so that's actually in there.
Well, it signs off that they need to be honest and truthful, but my question is, what are the consequences if they are not, if it is determined that they were not?
Rich and I would deal with that immediately if that happened, I mean, we would deal with that, we haven't laid out all the consequences for that. I know, I wanted to kind of comment on the question that this is happening fast, and the board hasn't had a chance to discuss this, I guess, when I look at this, and if I were to go back to the timeline, and when we first received notification on what the metrics were going to be, to, you know, to say, today is February 8th, and we were given the information from Warren County, I believe on January 28th or 29th, if we go back to the presentation, I mean, we have done a lot of work in a short period of time, I've included it all for the board to see to the best of my ability, so, I just wanted to go on record as saying, I really feel like, we put everything out there as quick as we could, and we've worked very hard to follow all the procedures, working with our medical director, so I just wanted to go on record as saying, I do feel like that's clearly been communicated in a short period of time, but yeah, there's been a lot of information coming forward that we've really tried, I've tried to keep the board in the loop every step of the way. Any more?
I have some comments on both of the resolutions, okay.
Kathy?
Um, okay, thank you, Dan, um, yes, it does, it does feel rushed, and I know that things change on a daily, sometimes even hourly basis, and I do appreciate all the work that you all have put into this presentation, I know that this is a very highly charged and very emotional topic that we're talking about, but I go back to the fall, when we first started talking about this, and it was two weeks after school had started, at that point in time, the area, the county was running at about 2%, and we were not comfortable moving forward on a 2% infection rate, and I'm just wondering where this 4% came from, why are we comfortable now with 4% when we weren't comfortable with 2% in the fall? And my other question is, have you thought about creating bubbles for athletes, such that if, have your athletes that are on these teams attend school remotely until the season is over, and then that way, you have a bubble of just athletes, and you're not potentially exposing other students in a classroom that are not an athlete?
So, I guess, a couple of comments for that, Kathy, great question, thank you, so, with that, we have had many sports running so far, right, when you look at that, we've had, we've had several going throughout this year, and we've also had students that have been playing on club teams, that have been coming in our building, and we have not had one student-to-student transmission yet this year, not one student-to-student, so these students have been in our buildings, many of these students have already been playing on their club teams, and they've been here, which is telling us that our protocols are working, and that they're going very, very well, so for us, for me, that's one metric that Dr. Leonard asks me every time he talks to myself or Mr. Keys, has there been any student-to-student transmission with our tracing? And we are happy to be able to say there hasn't been, and to this point, any student-to-student, so, that's one reason why we've been feeling like this is, we do believe it's safe, there are low numbers, the basketball team, you know, our varsity basketball team, JB, would have 10 athletes on it, we do feel like that is safe at this point in time, we've spent a lot of time talking about the protocols, I don't know if you want to address the pods, Mr. Keys?
Where the opportunities present themselves, we will certainly do the best we can to try to cohort certain groups, and to kind of go back to your question, Kathy, which is a very good one, and very valid, back in the fall, there was much more unknown, we didn't have the body of work to reflect upon, to look and further assess the level of risk, as Mr. Gannon had said, of the total number of cases that we've endured this academic year, none of those cases resulted in transmission from student to student, or student to adult, or adult to student while in school, 35 states successfully played football this past fall without any major outbreak related to that, 48 states are currently playing or planning to play basketball this winter without any major outbreak. I worked with Dr. Robert Zayas, who is our NISWA Executive Director, we were on the phone for about an hour the other day, just kind of going through some of the things that he was privy to when going forward with winter high-risk sports and endorsing that with the Governor's Office and the Department of Health, some of the things that have gained media attention related to a wrestling tournament in Louisiana and a hockey tournament in Florida, when you look at those situations, safety protocols weren't being followed, other states and outside organizations are not doing the things that we have established in our safety protocols, so, this fall, seven of the 11 sections successfully conducted low and moderate risk sports, including soccer and field hockey throughout New York State, and in hindsight, I think you could say that we would have been able to do that at the time, we were apprehensive because of the lack of information that we had, however, we now feel as though we do have more information. The National Federation of High Schools has since eliminated the designation of sports being low, moderate, or high, and have asked us to do more things related to what we're currently doing when it comes to a sport, to determine whether or not it's safe enough to participate. So those were just a few of the things that I think we've factored in to our decision-making and making that determination to feel comfortable enough to come with you with a recommendation or with a presentation.
Um, okay, thank you, just, just a follow-up, real quick, and then, then I'll give the floor to someone else, there's been no student-to-student transmission, you said there's been no adult-to-student transmission, there's been no student-to-adult transmission, what about adult-to-adult, staff-to-staff, those people, those teachers that are coaching outside, or any staff member, what about staff-to-staff?
We've had one staff-to-staff transmission.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with any questions regarding the presentation?
I do, Dan.
I'm sorry.
John, if you could bring up the presentation again, go back to like slide three or four, I have just a quick question, um, on the capital region counties. It's like three or four, I think.
In reference to the percentage, Mr. Weaver?
Um, I just, I want to read it again, real quick. Go to the next, please. Let me try one more, now I'll just go ahead and...
I think he's looking at the counties, try 13.
Yeah, it's not that, it had something to do about participation, and it had capital region counties, and I'm confused at that, at that, that screen, and that quiet, that one part of it, and we are going to only participate in our, our own county, is that correct?
Not necessarily, we wouldn't be participating with any county that was above the stated metric of 4%. One of the factors that we have to consider is who are we going to play, there are no other teams in Warren County that participate in ice hockey at the moment, so we would, we would schedule competitions with those from Saratoga County and/or Rensselaer County, or possibly Albany County, if they were below the stated metric, and we have approval to do so.
Okay, so, ice hockey would probably be about the only sport that we'd be looking at that, correct?
And, well, basketball, once again, we're the only Class A school in Warren County, there is the potential to play Warren County schools, we would have to look at those respective matchups, but then potentially trying to see if there's an opportunity to participate with a school from Saratoga County, and, you know, Southwoods Falls would be a perfect example of that, right across the bridge.
Okay, I mean, I guess my concern is, we start spreading out and going into different areas, the transfer of athletes from one school in competition back to our school in competition, and it just concerns me, you know, when we start getting outside of our own parameter, not to say that ours is safe, but it just gives more opportunity for transmission.
We, Mr. Weaver, we did make the statement that we would try to reduce it to those within the capital region, which ultimately eliminates some of our potential competition at this time with our lead schools, because some of the schools from Montgomery County and Portland County actually reside in the Mohawk Valley region.
actually reside in the Mohawk Valley region. They have a higher percent at this point in time. So we are not interested in scheduling competitions with them at this time.
Okay. My only other thoughts, two of them, is the the cases we have daily at Queensberry. And this has been going on for quite some time. Mr. Gannon's daily email is without fail. And it's not going away, and that's one of my biggest concerns. February break is coming up. Super Bowl was just yesterday. The opportunities of of transmission becomes greater now again. And you know, some days, cases, we have one, two, I've seen as high as 10. I, you know, it's all over the board. So there's a lot of concerns out there. I think you guys did a great job on the presentation. Some things I I didn't know. Just look at my notes real quick. I think I'm good with that for now. I do. I do agree with Mrs. Beldon's comment as far as education first. And we can't get we can't get kids back in the school 100% yet. So that that's first and foremost, but thank you.
President Dan, it's Joe again to bounce off Mr. Weaver's comment. I guess this is a philosophical. It gets down to the philosophy of the whole thing. In the beginning of the year, when we talked about the hybrid learning, talked about the remote, talked about the in person, particularly with the big emphasis that is still there with social distancing six feet, with how the classrooms are set up in terms of barriers, in terms of how people interact with each other. But yet with high-risk sports, they're wearing a mask and that's it. I find it difficult why that would be okay when yet for the general student population who still can't come fully in class, that's supported to do high risk? I guess I I played sports on my junior and high school years, college years, I played sports. My daughters played sports, so please, it's not an anti-sports. It's more of pandemic concern with high-risk activities is where I'm going to. It just I can't I can't make the two things between what we have to do for social distancing in the school with the faculty, with the staff and the students as compared to a smaller group, which you said about 10 in one group, 10 in another group. And I'm not being facetious, but going back to Star Trek, there was a philosophical discussion. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few, or in Spock's case, the needs of the one. And I guess I is that still valid?
Thanks, Joe. Any other comments about the presentation? Thank you all. Sure, we'll be talking to you more about it in the meeting. Thank you. We reached a portion of the meeting for open forum. Hope everyone is aware that we encourage public participation in meetings. There'll be two open forums to provide opportunities to address the Board of Education. Each open forum is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes with up to three minutes allocated to each speaker. If time does not allow, all participants to speak. Questions and or comments may be directed to the website athletics@queensberryschool.org. There are some protocols for virtual open forums. This is a new participation method for all of us. The participants who wish to speak during the open forum should type their full name, if applicable, the organization they are representing in the chat bar. Participants will be called upon in order of appearance in the chat bar. The Director of Instruction Technology will announce each participant once their turn and ask them to unmute themselves. All speakers should identify themselves and a school-related matter or topic to be discussed. A timer will be visible on the screen to ensure that three-minute time limitations are followed by each speaker. So with the protocols in place, is there someone signed up? I assume there are.
Yes, the first person to address the board is Cindy Conlin. You unmute yourself and go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Cindy Conlin, parent of senior Matthew Conlin, as well as a physician working locally for 20 years. I trust that you read the letter we submitted last a few weeks ago, signed by 50 district parents. I won't reiterate those points except to say that we know your duties and responsibilities can be difficult, and we applaud your commitment to our children. We collectively and respectfully ask once again that you allow our winter athletes to play. Seventeen days ago, when the governor announced that high-risk sports could start practicing February 1st, you asked for patience. Patience was exercised. It was stated at the board workshop that the board would follow Warren County guidance. The county provided guidance stating that the rolling positivity rate needed to be below 4%. It's been below 4% for seven days. We've asked the county for guidance. They provided it. Tonight, I hear the board debating it. Action this evening has been called premature. The board's failure to discuss this prior to this evening should not be paid for by our children. It was also stated that Dr. Leonard's recommendation was an important consideration. He has recommended to proceed and approve the preparedness plan. You've asked the experts, and they've all voiced approval. We've heard concerns that athletes could jeopardize in-school learning for the entire district. While we've operated under the assumption that basketball is inherently high-risk, the available data do not, they suggest otherwise. A Wisconsin study looked at 30,000 student athletes over 16,000 practices and 4,000 games and found one case which was attributable to sports. Moreover, student athletes were less likely to contract COVID than their age-matched counterparts. Within our district, zero cases have been identified to be the result of transmission between students. The reality is that our children are a low-risk population. Eliminating spectators greatly mitigates the risk to adults. And additionally, many of the coaches, faculty, and staff have already had at least one COVID vaccine. And adults who feel that they are at inordinate risk from participating in these events should could choose to sit this season out. Our kids deserve more than simply running out the clock. We've been telling our kids for a year to follow the science, to listen to the adults. The board should seize this opportunity to show our kids that we can make difficult decisions based on facts and data and that we do what we say we will do. Our kids can learn that they can adapt, live their lives successfully and safely despite a challenging, changing landscape. The school can choose to partner with families, providing a framework for safe play while allowing parents to decide what's best for their kids. We appreciate your time, consideration, and thoughtful concern, but it's time to let our kids play. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Next to speak is Jim Ward. Please unmute yourself and address the board. Thor, good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. James Ward, parent of an eighth-grade student, Avery Ward, and two recent graduates, James and Bryant Ward. I'd like to thank Rich Keys for for pointing out some of the obvious facts of 49 states playing basketball, Nevada being the only one that's not. Thirty-five played football. I'd like to think that we are an intelligent community up here, but to be one of, you know, very few that are that are restricting our youth from playing sports is disturbing to say the least when it's such an integral part of many of the family's lives. Thank you, Cindy. You're gonna you've you've spoken much more eloquently than I can and pointed out some of the facts that I was going to point out. The one thing that really is bothersome to me is the lack of talk about the students and and what they've been through this past year. You know, the electronic, the screen time that we've talked about prior to COVID and what that's done to these students is is hopefully not irreparable. It puts stress on the brain. It actually shuts down the frontal lobe while overactivating the visual and and the reward pathways. And what that basically does is it inhibits development within the younger generation. So from eight to 14 during puberty, the the development of the frontal lobe is is most critical. And at this time, this is what they're lacking. ER visits, mental health related, 24% increase from five to 11-year-old, 31% 11 up. And and twice as many are taking online depression screenings. This is all indicative of what the lack of normalcy and what the screen time and everything else is is putting the effect on our children. Less friend time, less collaborative work, less exercise, less relationship development, lack of eye contact, they can't read social clues. I mean, you name it. This has been a detriment to our kids. Sports is a huge outlet for many, many of these children, not all. Arts, music, I understand that these are very important aspects as well. But for families such as ours, sports are critical in the development and the and the dreams and the desires of of these kids. You know, it was mentioned, safety, empathy, and wellness were 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 focused. Well, I think sports are included in each one of those for the mental health of our kids. You know, too, too much screen time, behavioral problems, obesity, sleep problems. You know, you name it. This has been detrimental to to my kids specifically and the kids of this community. And I can't speak enough on the importance of sports in in these kids' lives. And I hope that you consider that.
Next to speak is Frank Collins. Please unmute yourself, Frank, and address the board.
Good evening, Mr. Collins.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes. And thank you, Jim and Cindy, for your for your comments. I I agree with you guys. I'm here to represent my two sons, Sean and Liam Collins, who both go to Queensberry High School. I've been involved with Queensberry Sports along with Jim and Cindy and many other parents for many years. And I, you know, I've come to know a lot of the student athletes at the school over the years, as well as their parents, teachers, coaches, et cetera, for for a long time now. I know this coronavirus has been a challenge to all of us. But like Jim has stated, and Cindy both, the 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 tough things that they've had to learn in the positions that these student athletes have been put in for the last 10 months have been something that I I think you will have a hard time to find answers to for a while. There's a lot of lot of negative outcomes that are happening because of the situation that we're in. It's nobody's fault. It's the virus. We get it. But we've come a long way. We've actually adapted very well. Rich Keys, excellent presentation tonight, talking about how we've been able to adapt and prepare. The preparedness plan is in place. So tonight, you know, it's the board's opportunity. It's an opportunity to be brave and step forward. Take another step for the the whole community and for these these student athletes and open the door and let them play. You know, the recent approval from the county health leaders was all based on science, medical, public health expertise, not emotions. You know, we're parents. We get emotional. But all the reason for the approval, and Albany County just approved it today as well, is based on the science. Cindy stated again that the board indicated they would follow the guidance based on the facts from the county. They wanted to see the rolling positivity rate stay below 4%. They wanted to see the guidance from Dr. Leonard, the clinical doctor that spoke to the board at the workshop that we all attended. It's clear, and we all can agree, these markers are there, they've been met, and they've been exceeded. The science is there, the facts have taught us, we've learned how to adapt. We need to get back into these activities for the health and well-being, the mental health, the psychology of the well-being of our children. The efforts of Rich Keys and the members of your board, the framework, the protocols, the safety measures, they're all there. They've been planned out. We know you guys have done everything possible to create a low, as low a risk as possible for these activities. And now we, as parents, are sitting here tonight telling you that we're ready to take on the responsibility going forward to ensure that our kids can get back to the sports that they love. Because the sports are the glue to their life success, you know. That's where their friendships have started. That's where their education started. There's so much more positive thing outcomes that will come from their activity and all these things like were presented earlier, band and drama club. I'm so happy to see that Queensberry has led the way in in offering and being brave and offering up all these activities. Be brave one more time, folks. This the trends are going down. We're there. We can see the daylight. Give these kids a chance to be active, play ball, and we're with you, and I appreciate your vote. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next to address the board is Brian Shell. Please unmute yourself and address the board.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to make sure you can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you. My name is Brian Shell. I have two boys in Queensberry High School, both play football, and they both wrestle. I'm here to advocate on behalf of the high-risk sports in the most scientific sense, in that I just I just beg everyone who's on this call and in this meeting to really take a look at the science, to look at the evidentiary metrics that everyone's been talking about. Because this fear about youth sports being a high risk is a bit of a misnomer once you start looking at the data because you're talking about one of the lowest-risk groups in our entire population. And I think that taking this avenue away from them based on emotion and not science and that is something that I think we will grow to regret in the very short term because you're going to see these effects on these kids of not having this outlet is just going to exacerbate some of the issues that other parents have expressed concern with. So all I ask is, will the board be presenting the evidentiary metrics that they're using to disqualify or qualify these sports? And will we have the opportunity to arbitrate if we find that science and data is not being used and they are being silenced by emotion and politics? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Next to address the board is Mickey Hayes. Please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hello, I'm Mickey Hayes. Father and recent graduate of M.A. Hayes, lifelong resident, very proud of Queensberry. I wanted to thank you all for that. My feeling is toward the board and I appreciate all of our everybody's support even at this point.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah.
Wait a minute. I don't know if you're too far away from your microphone, but it's very distorted on our end.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Much better, much better.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Actually, I'm not very good with tag now. Once again, Mickey Hayes, a father of Lance Hayes, a senior, recent graduate of M.A. Hayes, a lifelong resident of Queensberry, very proud of graduating myself at Queensberry. I want to wrap up for me. A lot of that passion and points to heaven. My feeling is it's more of a confidence in the people at Queensberry School, the teachers, the coaches, Mr. Gannon, the keys. I feel like their future, their safety, they're all being off to them. So far. It's a great board. We have a great level of confidence in teachers, everyone.
Dan, excuse me. Mickey, excuse me. This is Tim Weaver. In fairness to you, so everybody can hear, it's you're still really distorted. I don't know about logging out and logging back in. But I I'd look would like to hear what you have to say, and it's be it's very difficult. I don't know if there's a short connection in your microphone or it's just the connection itself. But if if we can do that. But if we can do that, I'd appreciate it.
You got it. We'll try that.
So if you can try to log out and log back in, we'll hear your presentation. Is there anybody else?
Yes.
Jen Remser is up next. Please unmute yourself and address the board. Good evening, Ms. Remser.
Hi, I like hearing the discussion about mental health and frontal lobes as a neuroscientist and a parent of two children in Queensberry School District. And I also really want to thank the parents for bringing so much attention to following science when it comes to getting our kids back in sports. I wasn't going to comment and was just here to listen tonight. I think exercise has a demonstrated effect on wellness and our kids do need those outlets and those releases at the end of the days. And the protocols that you guys have described here tonight have sounded, you know, very safe to me. I would like to ask those parents that are speaking out now about the science related to going back to sports to also consider the science regarding reading. And I know I've been kind of a bug in people's ear about this and I'm not trying to turn the tables, but since we do have so many parents here tonight, I would just like to say that I would like to have your support also when it comes to looking at the ELA programming and that there are 19 states that follow the science of reading. New York is not one of them. Right now, the federal government is screening non-criminal offenders for dyslexia and remediating that among the offenders. New York State has laws that are going towards that right now as well. However, there is no screening in New York for things like that. So now that we have learned this year that we really do need to pay attention to the data, I hope that you would also consider the support when it comes to curriculum and you have my backing when it comes to sports. But I would appreciate yours when it comes to the science of reading and the boards and the administrators that are here tonight, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hayes can come back in? Comes back in, using the second microphone to cover the floor at the end of the meeting. So if you want to hear one that wants to speak. But if you want to.
Yes, correct.
Okay, then we'll proceed with the meeting. One more?
I tried to get on with John's chat room so I could speak, but I couldn't figure out how to do it.
Mr. Coach, hello?
Hello.
Lower your.
So I have a question for the board.
Okay.
Okay, so the CDC recommends that no one travel. But in next week, we have a winter break and in a few weeks, we have spring break. And people from Queensberry travel. They're going to go to Disney, they're going to go to Myrtle Beach, they're going to go skiing in Colorado. Do we have any protocols in place or will we have protocols in place to look at faculty, staff, parents, kids? New York State requires that all these people who go out of state, if it's not contiguous, have to be tested when they get back to New York State within three days, I believe, or they have to quarantine for six to 10 days. What are we going to do about some of these people? They're not, many of these people aren't going to tell you that they went skiing in Colorado or went to Disney. How are we going to handle that over February break and over April break? What protocols do we have? We're going to have to, you know, rat on our neighbors on your hotline? That's my question.
I know, Mr. Coach, I'm just briefly aware there are some protocols in place, but I would probably prefer Mr. Gannon to you and maybe another time to respond. Because I just wanted to know how it was a longer story. If it's okay with you, Mr. Coach, and Mr. Gannon, give you a call and discuss that. Is that okay with you? Anything else, Mr. Coach? I think that was enough.
No, we're good.
Okay, thank you, Coach. We do have another parent who just did a form or just over 30 minutes. Sure, I will. Go ahead. Mark Yersha, Mark Yersha, please unmute and address the board.
Hey, good evening. This is Mark Yersha. Thanks for your time. A lot of great discussion here. Appreciate the work that was done on the plan. I guess it's really just down to one question. Why wouldn't we follow the science? That's my question.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. There's nothing else. I think Mr. Hayes is back for us. It does look like Mr. Hayes is back.
Hello?
Is that Mr. Hayes?
Is that better?
Much better.
Geez, I can't believe you can't get a good microphone with a $20 computer. Oh, God. I don't know what you guys heard and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board. And thanks for all your hard work from the board itself and from Rich and Mr. Gannon. Very impressive. Like I said before, I don't know what you heard, that Lance Hayes is a senior, a son of our family, and Emma Hayes, a recent graduate. And myself, a graduate of Queensberry, very proud, as most of you probably know, of my Queensberry heritage. A lot of great points have been brought up. But my mainly, my main point I want to get across is that as a parent, we're making a decision to put our kids in your hands at the school district and sports and their education is setting the tone for their future. My main point is that I feel ultra-confident that the teachers, the coaches, Mr. Keys, Mr. Gannon, and the people on the board will handle our kids' safety and what's best for them, the best possible way with their hard work, intelligence, research, following the facts, the sciences. So I have all the confidence in the world that I couldn't encourage my kid any stronger to participate in the so-called high-risk sport of basketball because of the staff and the hard work and the obvious time and work that's been put in by a lot of people to do so. So I still think that it's a great idea to go forward and I look forward to having the coaches mentor my son and make him a better man. And I look forward to the camaraderie that he experiences and the lifelong memories that he establishes with, I call his sandbox friends. Sandbox friends are forever because they experience things together in their formative years. Unfortunately, the formative years in these kids is slipping away. So I appreciate the urgency. I know it's a tough situation and we appreciate all the consideration. Try to do your best to get these kids out there playing and to flourish and enjoy their youth while they still have their youth. Thanks for your time and thanks to Rich Keys and Mr. Gannon and everybody on the board for allowing me to give my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dan, it's Stacy.
Hi, Stacy.
Hi, I'm just curious, you know, we've listened to the parents and as well as our former board members. I'm curious about the students. If there's any students, we have over 100 people on this call right now. You know, I would encourage them to speak if, you know, they would like to speak as well because we are speaking about them and, you know, their future and their in sports. And I'd really like to hear from the students, to be quite honest with you.
As would we, I believe, would be an excellent viewpoint. There are many students on the call with, give us your name in the general line. We have one. Right now, it's Avery Ward. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Avery.
Avery, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Well, how are you tonight?
Good. Just going along with my dad said, sports are just a big part of my life and not having them takes a real toll on my mental health. I mean, that was my outlet. Like even with school and everything, it gets pretty stressful sometimes. And just going after school and playing sports, that really helped me out. And I miss sports.
Thank you, Avery.
Thank you.
Any else? So, Terren Teague. Terren, go ahead and unmute yourself. Terren?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, please. Go forward.
So I'm Terren Kane. I'm a recent graduate of Queensberry High School. I graduated in the year 2020. I played lacrosse throughout my entire high school career and middle school career. And it was really hard not being able to play my senior year. I was so looking forward to it. And I know a lot of my fellow teammates could agree with me on that. And I think if you follow the correct protocol and the cautions and that these kids feel comfortable and these parents feel comfortable, I would, I think they would all really appreciate it if they were able to play their senior year, their junior year. No matter what year it is, it's still really important to them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Terren. I appreciate it.
Just go on.
Hey, can I say something real quick?
Sorry, who's this?
Hello?
Yeah, so who are we speaking with?
Oh, this is Jason Rodriguez.
Okay, Mr. Rodriguez, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing well, thanks. Please, address the board.
Yeah, so I'm a three-sport athlete at Queensberry. My whole family's been involved in sports my whole life. And I think it's just like really important that the board understands like how sports truly impact kids. I don't think they truly know that. Like I know a lot of people say to us like they know what we're going through, but they really don't. They've never been in a situation like this where, you know, they're an 18-year-old kid and they just get their senior year of high school shipped away from them. You know, sports kind of, they've been my whole life and you don't really understand what something means to you until you have it taken away. So I just hope that, you know, they can consider that. And one other thing, so a little more fact-based and emotion, is when James mentioned like going away to that ski trip in Colorado or whatever, you know, if I have a basketball game or something, I know I'm just going to want to cherish that. So I'm not going to go on that ski trip. I'll stay home, you know, stay home for that whole week and live this last 20 weeks of sports that I can't have. You know, maybe not go to Florida or Disney World. I'll go to my basketball game in Johnsburg if I have to, wherever that is. And I also just want to reiterate what Mr. Shell said to the people who want to vote no. You know, what is your reasoning for voting no? The data is there. You know, that metric is really skewed. I don't love that. But, you know, just really think about why you're saying no. And just think about all the lives that you're impacting. Thank you.
Jason, thank you very much. All right, 30 minutes. All right, 30 minutes, okay. All right. Thank you all. Proceed with the meeting. Then just one more?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mannix. I would like to start the business agenda if I could. Each year, the WISWES superintendents have a strong advocacy group in the state and set up goals. I know the board's aware of that. I think a few have seen different goals each year. But the three goals that we're asking the board to approve tonight, they're very easy to understand. The first one is, we're advocating across all the different counties that are in our WISWES and in Albany, an awful lot. We just met with the legislators a few weeks ago and talked about making sure that school aid is to the greatest extent possible. And you saw where our foundation aid was last, Mr. Whitmore presented it. So we have, we're hoping for more aid, obviously. But right now, that's a strong advocacy group that's working. And also, we're asking, there are three goals here. The second goal is supporting a long-term solution, the small group health insurance. There are many districts within our WISWES that have less than 100 employees within their district. And this is something that was allowed, this was voted on and allowed to happen for this year, to continue that small group health insurance. But there's not a long future for this. And in the event that they were affected, they would pull out of our consortium, which would cause our rates to rise. So we're advocating strongly that that continues to move forward. Mr. Whitmore?
Just thought that last item related unemployment insurance, school districts throughout the area, throughout the state, have seen significant increase in unemployment costs. So the conceived average, average of the state could address that during this financial crisis. So at this time, I would recommend to the board act on this item A as presented. Thank you, Mr. Whitmore. Can I have a motion on A, please?
So moved.
Weaver, I have a second, please?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion on the motion that's presented? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All she cares. Recommend to the board for this item B, the resolution related to corrective action plan, latest in the internal audit report, as presented. Thank you. This was presented in the Friday report and we'll also in the workshop, we talked about it. So may I motion for letter B, please?
So moved.
Any of a second?
Second.
Stacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All she cares. Thank you. Recommend to the board for this item C, a resolution related to internal audit report issued by corporate companies. Again, this is similarly, we talked about this in the Friday report from the audit committee. I have a motion on letter C, please.
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Can I have a second?
Second, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All she cares. Recommend to the board for this item B, votes to implement emergency pesticide application for this ground and playing field, to the DC threshold limits outlined in this service, generated by the state. Thank you. May I have a motion for letter D, please?
So moved.
Stacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion on the motion? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? All she cares. Recommend to the board for this item B, votes to accept the resignation for retirement purpose. Gary Powell, age is over effective February 27, 2021, this is a period of appreciation and regret. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. Second?
Second, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All she cares. Recommend to the board for this consent item.
Recommend to the board for this consent item F to vote.
So moved.
I mean, uh, items after all that they need removed from the consent agenda. Eric Dunn, can I have a motion to approve, after all?
So moved, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Can I have a second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you. Um, no discussion. So all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Consent agenda is after all passed. Again?
I have the pleasure of, um, putting forward so many years of service for the district. People, uh, teachers that have worked for, you know, thirty plus years of their career here in Queensberry. We're very, we're very, very proud of all of these teachers. The first teacher that I'd like to say for actually to make a motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Jeffrey King, QHS social studies teacher with sincere appreciation and regret, effective seven, one, twenty-one.
Have a motion, please?
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy. Any discussion on the motion? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Motion carries.
I recommend the board move to approve the action item B, motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Andrea Siemens, QMS grade six teacher with sincere appreciation and regret, effective seven, one, twenty-one.
I have a motion, please?
So moved, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Second?
Second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion on the motion? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Motion carries.
I recommend the board move to approve the action item C, motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Carol Sykes Bowden, WHBI grade five teacher with sincere appreciation and regret, effective seven, one, twenty-one.
Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Stacy, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any objections?
Motion carries.
I recommend the board move to approve action item D, the motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Pat Thompson, QES special education teacher with ser, with sincere appreciation and regret, effective seven, one, twenty-one.
Have a motion, please? Thank you.
So, so moved, Kathy. Or second, sorry.
We'll take a walk. Any discussion on the motion? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Motion carries.
I recommend the board move to approve the action item D, motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Jennifer Carly, QES WHBI art teacher with sincere appreciation and regret, effective one, thirty-one, twenty-two.
I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Tim. Second?
Second, Joe.
Joe? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
I recommend the board move to approve action item P, motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Kathleen Wilson, QES kindergarten teacher with sincere appreciation and regret, effective seven, one, twenty-three.
Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mike?
Whoever. Yep.
Yes, second, please.
Second, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy. Any discussion on the motion? Eric Dunn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Motion carries.
I recommend the board move to approve action item T, motion to accept the revised resignation for retirement purposes of Colleen Slate, UES kindergarten teacher with sincere appreciation and regret, effective two, twenty-two, twenty-one.
Motion, please? Thank you.
So moved.
Joe, you have a second?
Second.
You have a third. Um, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections?
Motion carries.
I recommend the board move to approve action item H, motion to approve the following revised long-term substitute appointment of Michelle Valardi, UES grade three teacher.
Have a motion, please?
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
No, second.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension?
Motion carries.
I recommend the board move to approve action item I, the motion to approve the following resolution. Whereas on January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, the governor and the New York State Department of Health authorized schools to operate certain high-risk winter sports effective February first, twenty twenty-one, as may be permitted and authorized by local county departments. And the following sports are on the docket, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, hockey and cheerleading. And we are, the school districts and myself would be subject to the following conditions that are listed below, under.
I have a motion, please? Fran, may I have a second?
Second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, please. President Dan.
Please go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. I can't tell you all how appreciative I am to have heard all of the public comments, the student comments, as well as questions and answers about the discussion. Couple of things to my mind that came up. The questions came up about the science. I think interpretation of science can be used in certain ways. Some science says we're, we're still right in the middle of the pandemic and we don't know what's going to happen. The other science says, well, it's three point nine, it's under four, so we're good to go. I just wanna go on record is I do not view the board is voting on this resolution. It's not a resolution, like, let's buy a new school bus. It's not a resolution about let's fix the boilers or let's buy supplies or fix the roof. This is a resolution that does affect lives. Pure and simple, it can affect lives with transmission of this virus. I'm voting for my conscience. I will be voting no, because if there were one instance of someone being infected because of high-risk sports and it means the loss of a life, I couldn't live with myself, so I, I will be voting no.
Not voting this yet, but, uh, thank you, Joe. Any other comments?
Um, this is Kathy. I just have a statement, actually. Um, I too wanna thank, um, all of the parents and the students that spoke this evening. Your passion is extremely evident. And as I said before, this is a very highly charged and extremely emotional topic. And I don't believe that this is a decision that anyone will make lightly this evening. Um, I spent countless, countless hours on New York State websites, Warren County websites. I've made phone calls to experts. Um, I've really, really thought long and hard about this. And as per the governor's executive summary, the resumption of these activities does not mean that they are safe or that they are without risk. Um, and so it's my opinion that now is not the time to relax our actions or deviate from our plan. As a matter of fact, I feel like we need to work even harder to prevent transmission of all cases of COVID. Seeing as we are so, there is light at the end of the tunnel with vaccines and yes, things are getting better. But that doesn't mean that we let up. Um, I feel that it is our, our first priority needs to be the full reopening of our schools with students in attendance daily and in person. And when I vote tonight, I will be voting with those students in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Maybe I have something, please, go ahead, please.
I do, thank you. Um, yeah, I too wanna recognize all of the parents and the students who spoke tonight. Uh, it was actually a pleasure to hear from people. Sometimes no one speaks at our meetings. So, uh, I really applaud you all for being here. That's, I believe that's how this should work. Um, I, I also, you know, respect your passion and your decision to make decisions that are best for, your decision to make the best decisions for your own child. But I have to say that as a board member, I've struggled with this too. Um, it's not about fear. It, it's not about emotions. Um, I appreciate and, and, you know, believe that we need to follow the science and that includes uh, the importance of mental health and the science about mental health and exercise and students having those connections. That's all very important. But I also wanna say that part of the guidance from Warren County, uh, wasn't just about the science. It was from, it was with approval from the board. And I think each of us takes this decision, um, really, you know, really close to heart. And, um, and it's an honor to be able to, to have the ability to make that decision. Um, so it's, it's really not just about following the signs and if we all look at this a little bit differently. For me, it's a question of equity. Um, I joined the board to be a voice for all students. And so I think we have to move forward, thinking about what is best for all students. And if we're ready and prepared, and I think we are, because the administration has done a very good job putting together a plan. But if we're ready and prepared to allow all students to participate, it's all students. It's not just high-risk sports. It's everything. Currently, there's thirty percent of my population of clubs approximately, um, that are, that have gone back. And I think we need to really seriously think about all clubs and all students. Um, so moving forward, I'd really like to have more conversations about that. I'd really like to have more conversations about the mental health of students. Not all students are gonna be involved in clubs and sports. Um, sometimes the most vulnerable ones are not engaged. So I think it's important that we've had this conversation about mental health. We started at the last workshop. I very much appreciate that, but would like to see more of that moving forward. Um, I'm gonna make a decision today based on the science and the mental health of students, but moving forward, we need to think about all students.
Thank you. Mr. Vanek, great.
Uh, thanks, everybody. I know it is, um, students and stuff to get on and express your emotions. And I know that it's very difficult when you're seeing things that you've been, uh, kind of confined the last year. Um, I also saw that report that Dr. Collins, uh, gave out and I think our, that report was done based on the mental health of athletes not being able to play sports. And yes, the sage group, if you wanna look at the science, is not affected by COVID as much as the older population. That's science. I see some board members tonight who talk about education. And I will be glad to speak to anybody at any time that sports is just as much as educational aspect as math, as science, as any type of course offered in school. I have learned more lessons based on playing sports, life lessons, that I go with for the rest of my life. Did deprive these kids of those chances, I think, is wrong. I think also that the one thing that everybody's starting to talk about now is the mental health of all these kids. And my kids are out of school. But think about if your child was in school right now and couldn't play. You think you'd be having, having them from downstairs open? Not any type of energy for anything they have to do in their life. So I think we have to look at it from the standpoint of these kids are gonna survive after fourteen days, most probably the majority of them, if they get COVID. Are some of them gonna struggle with suicide? With depression? With all the things that go along with mental illness. So the effect of the mental illness could be more of a detriment than the actual COVID. And I've been a coach for thirty-three years, so I, I gotta believe that I've listened to Rich and Mr. Garrett and I did get anything under control. And the beauty of it is if it doesn't work, move, we stop it. It's it. We're done. But we had a conversation at the beginning of the year, oh, we can allow in-person, in-person education, they're gonna go to school. We had our doubts then. Look what happened. It's worked out. We gotta give these kids a chance. Thanks, President Dan.
Any other board members? Could you just speak? I do have a few things I'll say, but.
President Dan, President Dan?
Yes, Joe.
I just would like to respond to, uh, Fran, Mr. Cabana. Particularly with the mental health aspect, when you talk suicides, when you talk this, I think I will go back to what Ms. Malloy had said, it's for all students, not just sports. And I read your presentation or your dissertation, Mr. Cabana, is that it's only for sports? I think it's a global problem or a global issue that should be addressed. And I don't think sports is gonna solve it for everyone. It's just, I, I, maybe I misread you, sir. But I think that was an overgeneralization of the mental health issue because it affects the whole student body, not just those who participate in sports, because there are many who cannot participate in sports. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
Dan, I, I'm just, I was waiting to see if anybody else wanted to speak, but I'll go ahead. This, this is my seventeenth year on the board. This is probably one of the, the most hardest decisions that have come in front of us, I think. Um, I, I wish we weren't here. Um, if anybody knows me good enough, they know my passion for sports. Um, I officiate two sports. Um, if you remember back in the fall, I was very adamant about going forward. Um, and we didn't. And that's fine. Um, a lot of things have changed, um, since then. Um, having experienced COVID closer than I wanted to in my family. So I have a little bit different perspective and outlook now. Um, we, we speak of mental health. I, I also think we also need to also look at physical health. And piggybacking on what Mr. Schreiber said, um, I just, I would be very, very torn if something happened to one of our student athletes. Um, due to COVID. And I, I wish we had more time on our side, but we don't. But I, um, I pre, I do, I wanted to say I do appreciate everyone's attendance. I don't think I've ever seen a hundred and four people. Well, I can't say that, but this is for a virtual, a hundred and four has been a lot of people. Um, and I, and I appreciate all your, your, your passion, your thoughts and your comments tonight. Um, I appreciate Stacy for bringing up the, um, asking that the students speak, cuz that's what we're here about tonight and always. Um, so those are just my, my thoughts and my comments. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Tim. I don't switch to speaker and such, I have a few things, but hopefully for everyone. Okay. We've, uh, we talked to a lot of people, uh, tonight. Thank you very much for everyone. We've talked to a lot of people tonight. Thank you very much for everyone who participated. Obviously, it's, parents speak with passion about their children and wanting the best for their children. And that's clearly evident in what we heard tonight. We talk about, all the time, we talk about educating students and we talk about educating the whole student. And, and that, that does mean more than going to math class, going to English class. That means that they have the extra opportunities that we provide. It means band, it means clubs, it means everything that we do, our club, the concerts, the things that kids have a real passion for. Well, children also have passion for playing basketball, for playing sports. Not everyone plays sports, but we're not addressing everyone, but we're addressing every student we can with every possible opportunity that we can as soon as we can. And I think that's been addressed by the administration, by the building leaders and by our teachers to do what we can to bring some sense of normalcy to a period of time that's been really crazy for all of us. When every decision we make here at the board, we rely on experts for everything. We, when we talk about the budget and financing, we talk to Rick Tins. He's a permanent expert for us. He helps guide us to financial stability. As we're well aware, that we're in a pretty good position now. Curriculum, besides our own very talented administrators and everything, we consistently invest in professional development to bring the experts in to tell us what we need to know and how we present this to make our educational opportunity the best it can be. And we do that, but we believe in that. And, and policy and procedures, we rely on NISM, on the preeminent experts and how to keep our policies up to date, keep them relevant for the students and for the facilities. For everything we do, we rely on experts. The beautiful school that we, that we rebuilt here, we rely on the expert. We're doing, we're going to do the same thing here, in my opinion. We, we've asked the experts to tell us what do they think, what do they know? Were they comfortable with, what are they, what safety protocols are best put in place? And ultimately, do they think it's safe enough for our kids to participate in these sports? We've talked with Dr. Leonard. He said he's approved our plan to take a return to these sports other than rest. We've relied on Warren County Public Health. They've dealt with this every day since, over for a year now. They see the science, they see the CDC recommendations. They see the local, state and national implications of what we're doing, what's happening with COVID. They've laid out metrics where they believe the protocols can be put in place that let kids safely compete. Then we, we should listen to them. We should listen to the experts of Department of Health from every other county that's approved this from here to the capital district. They've all gone through their analysis. They've all gone through their, their testing. They know their protocols. They know what's safe for kids. And, and I knew today was Executive McCoy, based on the science, not on emotion. That was his decision to allow high-risk sports to go forward in all the county. It's, there's a lot of risk in everything we do every day, regardless of COVID. And we've seen it on football field, on baseball fields, the basketball courts. There's risk in everything we do. But I think the risk of not going forward affects those students that can participate, that want to participate, it affects them more than not doing it. It's, it's no excuse, but these clinics, these outside clinics are taking place and the kids are participating. And they're, they're being, some are being left out, one, because they can't afford it. Or two, there's so many kids that are in our team, they have limited, just like we are. So maybe 10 kids can participate in a volleyball event, or 10 kids participate in a basketball event. And they're following protocols and they're doing it safely. We've spent enormous time and effort developing these protocols, these safety plans. It's an excellent plan. I think we've covered almost anything that we could possibly cover to help facilitate a safe transition of kids into sports. It's a limited number of children. Understand that. Again, sports aren't for everyone. Someone else wants to play in a band, a participating club, an intramural squad, then they can do that. And, and we try to help facilitate that for every child. Again, we always go back to all means all, and it does. I mean, there's a lot of things that, like studies and this and that, but I'm not a medical expert, not a finance expert, I'm not a policy procedure expert. So we rely on these people. I think that's what we've done. I think it's a responsible thing to do. So that's, that's my, my say, my two cents. Is there any other comments on the board before we take a vote? Okay. There are no more comments. Going to have a motion regarding revolution. We're going to do a vote because of the, of the virtual nature of this, the eyes and the name might, they will get mixed up. So we're going to take a roll call vote, so we're clear on, on the vote count. Would it work? Let's see.
I'm.
Trusty Holster.
I can't hear you. Who did you, who did you call?
Trusty Holster, how do you go?
Nay.
Trusty Sheldon.
Nay.
Trusty Lloyd. Trusty Shay.
Aye.
Trusty Weaver.
Nay.
Trusty Scriber.
Nay.
Trusty Manns, aye. Trusty Clary.
Nay.
Aye. By the board, aye. Educational consent items. We're going to remove letter P from the consent agenda as a move point. And. So may I have a motion for federal, I'll say it directly.
I recommend the board move to approve educational consent item J through V minus P.
Have a motion for educational consent J through V minus P.
Some votes.
Amy, ten seconds. Any discussion, no discussion, I understand. All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Educational consent items, aye. Day. Board committee reports. The finance committee met and the facilities committee met. District health met, safety committee met also, a lot of meetings. Joe, you want to talk about the facilities committee meeting? So, I'm sorry, the finance. I can report, it was essentially a presentation about the, the budget, what we saw in the workshop and tonight, the second we discussed, the state of financing and recent information that's our, our committee meeting because of the budget numbers and what happened.
And there is one, a budget meeting is a plan for the finance committee.
What's that, Joe?
I think we have a, a finance committee meeting, a budget meeting planned too, before the workshop.
Yes, we do, at the end of the month before the, before the workshop. When, this month? Next month, yeah, next month, correct. So then, facilities, we met, Tim?
Go ahead, Dan.
It was essentially the, well, it was all about the building condition survey. So we discussed that in the workshop as well, so there's really nothing new to report on that. Amy, center committee met?
Yes, the district public advisory committee met. We had a lot of conversation, great conversation about trying to find ways to bring information to students and families regarding health and wellness resources in the community. So really focusing on that idea of how do we get people just out in a community and understanding what resources are available, what things they can do, whether it's like speeding, cross-country speeding through the county or other things like that. Also talked about some parent universities possibly coming up in a couple of months. So a lot of separate topics, tech-related, health and health-related. A lot of work to do, but it's good, good process.
Mr. Manns, safety committee?
We did. We met today. Great quote, quote, cue, just one of the same survey that you presented in the last four, which was with the DCF survey.
Board, no, the board committee, correct? I will give a shout to the, the policy committee. They did review, part of the consent agenda was regarding revisions to the structural regulations. So that was reviewed and discussed. And then put on the board agenda for the passage this evening, so thank you for all that hard work. Board, your comments? A lot going on at the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I couldn't get my microphone on. It's Kathy. I just want to say thank you. This was tough, this was tough tonight. But this is why we do this. And it's not over because we've got a spring season coming and, and you know, we'll, we'll discuss that when we get there. But I just want to say thank you because I know it was tough.
Thank you, Dan. Any other board, board member comments?
Dan, President Dan, it's Joe. I echo Kathy's comment. Again, point was, I think it's too premature for this, but the other seasons are coming up too. There will be more data available, more trends to see what's going on. So I think we can be better prepared. So, but again, appreciate all the input.
Thank you. You have more comments? Just wanted to highlight a few things that you saw in the prior report. One thing I'm sure, I hope gets the much attention and show, the technology newsletter. The board seems, it's a nice piece, the colors and the graphics involved in it and all the things you're doing. It's really fantastic. So if you didn't really detect it on anyone's side, it's pretty nice. They do, they do a hard work on that. So a lot of things being done. So thanks, Jeff, and your department. We had some students win some awards, the public service announcements. But that was real exciting, particularly in this time we're talking about with, you know, being, things that, being up to normal. These folks put together videos to mend them and won at several levels. So that was a very nice to see. So a lot for those, you know, men and women. And we have an ad hoc various awards committee coming up Thursday evening. Mr. Dan and myself are presenting on one of the topics Friday night in the time of COVID. So we're looking forward to that presentation. It's a virtual meeting. If anyone's interrupted, please just let us know. We can list it. We'll certainly give you the link to the meeting. But there's two other schools presenting superintendents and their board of education member. And then Ling King, I believe, is also coming, talking a little bit. So if you have the time, please sign onto that. Back going on, about it. Anything else to come for the board? We do have a second open forum. Anybody signed up?
Yes, we do have one person at this point signed up. It's Jim Ward.
Mr. Ward, please unmute him. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you guys for putting this on. I have failed to participate in many years and I'm actually regretfully, I'm going to start from now on. Just a quick statement, I'm disgusted in your cowardice and your arrogance. I will do my best to encourage those who voted nay out. I will, I will invest money and my efforts. I don't think your concern lies with our children. It lies only with.
Jim?
Don't mute him.
Yeah, it's, we got to maintain, it's, it's open forum to discuss, address the board, but not to pass accusations. This is where it is. Jim, you're going to mute.
May I speak, please? Thank you. What I was saying is.
I mean, the purpose of the open forum is to address topics that are on the agenda for the board. I just don't want to give any personal impact or anything like that. That just wouldn't be proper.
My, my, my point is that the concern is not lying with our children. It's lying in your own fear for those who voted nay. You do not have the best interests of our kids. You didn't speak about our kids once. You spoke simply about your fear of COVID, not how it affects our children. One of the members said the well-being of many outweigh that of a single individual. And then he, he mentioned if one gets ill, that he would regret. Well, he has failed to weigh the, the, the effect that this has on many. And, and again, I, I think the cowardice of this action is, is disturbing as a, as a member of this community. And I, and I think, I, I don't think any of you that voted nay deserve to be on the board because your best interest is not laying with our kids. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have some informational items that you can see at the bottom of the agenda. No need to go through them. And there's no executive session tonight. So I'm going to get a motion to adjourn. Amy, second. Fran, all favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?